The November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees is now called to order. We are pleased to be in person for this meeting but want to ask everyone to continue to take health and safety-related precautions as COVID and other viruses remain an issue. And it is so very good for us to be back together again. At this point in time, I would like to ask first Dean Stevenson to please give us a meditation, please.
Let us bow. God, we thank you for your grace, your mercy, your love, your kindness. Lord, we pray your peace over our country, our state, our city, and over Tennessee State University. We ask that you bless this meeting, everything that is done and said that you are pleased with today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask the cabinet members to stand and please introduce yourselves.
Quincy Quitt, interim Assistant Vice President for Research and Sponsored Programs and Chief Research Officer.
Jamie Ilse, Division of Institution Advancement.
Terrence Hizzard, Associate Vice President for Global Management.
Frank Stevenson, Associate Vice President and Dean of Students for the Division of Student Affairs.
Greg Robinson, Chief of Police.
Doug Allen, Vice President for Business and Finance CFO of ATO.
Mickey Ellen, Director of Management.
Lawrence Thornton, General Counsel.
I didn't forget him, miss that.
Tony Sharp, Associate Vice President for Innovation and Innovation.
Okay, thank you so much. As you will note in your board materials for today's board meeting, we have several items on the agenda today. The next item listed on your agenda is the roll call, Declaration of a Quorum. At this time, we need to call the roll. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Here.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Present.
Trustee Lewis.
Here.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Walker.
Here.
Trustee Wimberly.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Board members, if you cannot hear or speak to the other board members, please state so now. For each board member participating electronically, please identify any individuals.
We need to get Trustee McKenzie.
We need him?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trustee Penick.
We're good.
Present.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, board members, if you cannot hear or speak to other board members, please state so now. For each board member participating electronically, please identify any individuals who are present in the location from which you are participating. I would also like to introduce at this time our student trustee, Sean Wimberly. Thank you so much for being here with us. And also, we have with us, I do believe I saw coming in, the SGA president. Would you please stand, Mr. Kenny Roll? Is that it? Okay. But stand up again. I want to recognize him because it's, I understood last month that he and the Vice President of the SGA, Mr. Leo Holmes, went to Washington, DC, and met with Vice President Kamala Harris. Thank you for representing us so very well, and I think we need to give him a hand for that accomplishment. Okay. All right, we will continue. The first action item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. You have in your November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board materials the minutes for the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting?
Subway.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Okay. All right, the motion is approved. And thank you, Dr. Glover, but we have, I think, some more student representative leaders. They walked in after we made the announcement, did we not? Stand, please. Hi, and you are?
First Class President. Surgeon and Board First Class Presidents.
Okay.
I'm Josh Williams, South First Class President.
And I'm Allison, your point minister, the SGE Chair.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee Report. As the Audit Committee Chair, I will report the actions and other items from today's Audit Committee meeting. The Audit Committee met today to act on one item, receive reports on three items, and go into executive session to discuss matters deemed confidential under state law. The Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September fifteenth, of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Audit Committee meeting minutes. In addition, the Audit Committee reviewed and discussed completed internal and external audits, outstanding audit issues, and the Audit Office's external quality assessment. As I stated, the Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Audit Committee meeting. You have in your November seventeenth... You have in your November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board materials the minutes for the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Audit Committee meeting. Let's wait till we get it to national real quick. Okay. Okay. Now we can listen to the music. All right. All right, okay, on behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the motion is approved. Okay, I'm seeing, huh? As I, as I, as I go along, but I think Dean Barbara Merle, just, she is in here? I would like to ask her to stand. She is the head of the Levi Watkins Institute. And I just love to see the students at Mahari and their coach, their white coach at State Tennessee State University. Thank you so much, okay? The next item on the agenda is the Finance and Budget Committee Report. The Chair recognizes the Finance and Budget Committee Chair, Trustee Lewis, who will report the action and information items from today's Finance and Budget Committee meeting. Trustee Lewis.
Thank you, Chair Cole. The Finance and Budget Committee met today to act on three items and receive reports on six items. The Finance and Budget Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Finance and Budget Committee meeting minutes, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three institutional revised budget, and a bank reconciliation policy. Additionally, President Glover and her own team provided reports on capital planning and facilities, the Housing Special Committee, CARES Act funding, finance and budget enrollment, recruitment and retention, and institutional development. As I stated earlier, the Finance and Budget Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Finance and Budget Committee meeting. You have in your November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board materials the minutes for the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Finance and Budget Committee meeting. On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Finance and Budget Committee meeting contained in your board materials for the November seventeenth board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Finance and Budget Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Are you on, Obie?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is approved. Trustee Lewis.
The Finance and Budget Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three institutional revised budget. You have in your November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board materials the materials related to this agenda item. On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three institutional revised budget as contained in the board material for November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three institutional revised budget as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Finally, the Finance and Budget Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the updated bank reconciliation policy as amended. You have in your November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board materials relate, light materials related to this agenda item. On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the bank reconciliation policy as amended as contained in the board material for November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the bank reconciliation policy as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Just clarification, as amended.
The updated, okay. The updated bank reconciliation policy. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Chair Cole, this concludes the Finance and Budget Committee Report.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Lewis and other members of your committee. And just as you've given your report, it came to mind that I want to say to those that are joining us electronically, the work is done in the committees. I know it seems like we come in here and we just go very quickly, but believe me, there's a lot of detailed work done in the committee that invite you to join us electronically whenever you can to those that are now joining us. The next item on the agenda is the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Report. The Chair recognizes the Academic and Affairs, Student Affairs Vice Chair, Trustee Johnson, to report on the action items and other items from today's Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting.
Actually, it's Trustee Bill Johnson who's going to report out. The other one was Andre Johnson, who's not able to participate.
Okay, we're going to ask Trustee Bill Johnson to report in the absence of Trustee Andre Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Cole. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee met today to consider and vote on five agenda items and to receive reports on two other agenda items. Information regarding these items are in your materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting minutes, an academic program modification to change the credit hours of the Masters of Science in Speech and Hearing Science, and an academic program modification to change the name of the existing Business Information Systems Concentration within the Bachelors of Business Administration to Information Systems. The Committee also voted to recommend to the full board a new academic program, the Masters of Science in Agricultural Business and Leadership, and a new academic program, the Masters of Science in Accounting and Accounting Analytics. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also received reports on academic affairs and student affairs. As I stated earlier, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved.
The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of an academic program modification, a change in the credit hours for the Masters of Science in Speech and Hearing Sciences. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the academic program modification, the change in credit hours for the Masters of Science in Speech and Hearing Sciences as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion to approve the academic program modification, the change in credit hours for the Masters of Science in Speech and Hearing Sciences contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of an academic program modification, a name change in the existing Business Information Systems Concentration within the Bachelors of Business Administration to Information Systems. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the academic program modification, name change of the existing Business Information Systems Concentration within the Bachelors of Business Administration to Information Systems as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve an academic program modification name change of the existing Business Information Systems Concentration within the Bachelor of Business Administration to Information Systems as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program, the Masters of Science in Agricultural Business and Leadership. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the new academic program, the Masters of Science in Agricultural Business and Leadership as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion is on, the question is on the motion to approve a new academic program, the Master of Science in Agricultural Business and Leadership as contained in the board material for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee, Trustee Penick.
Okay.
Yes. Trustee Walker.
Yes.
The motion is approved. Trustee Johnson.
Yes. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program, the Masters in Science in Accounting and Accounting Analytics. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the new academic program, the Masters of Science in Accounting and Accounting Analytics as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve a new academic program, the Masters of Science in Accounting and Accounting Analytics as contained in the board meeting material for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Chair Cole, this concludes the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Report.
And thank you and thank the other members of the committee for the tremendous amount of work that you all do to bring us this information. The next item on the agenda is the Executive Committee Report. As the Chair of the Board and the Chair of the Executive Committee, I will report the action and information items from today's Executive Committee meeting. The Executive Committee met today to discuss and vote on one action item and hear reports on two items. The Executive Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Executive Committee meeting minutes. The Executive Committee also heard a report on the President's Annual Performance Evaluation Process and a report from Secretary Pendleton. As I stated, the Executive Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. On behalf of the Executive Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Penick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is a report on housing. The Chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide information regarding this agenda item. President Glover.
Dean Stevenson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Madam President. The Chair appointed a special board committee for housing, and we did have our first meeting to evaluate short-term and long-term housing opportunities at Tennessee State University. It is certainly no surprise to anyone that we are meeting, meeting with some housing challenges as it relates to supply versus demand. We currently have three thousand six hundred and eighty beds on campus, which includes our seven hundred new beds that came online this fall. However, our demand side has increased tremendously over the last few years, particularly with the high cost of housing in the city of Nashville and students' inability to afford housing in the city, affordable housing that's just simply not available. So it has increased our demand, particularly around the undergraduate students who are requesting now housing. And so we, we have prepared two things. One is what, what will happen this spring. So we will reduce the number of hotels that we currently have by three hotels. So Candlewood, La Quinta, and Ramada will come offline in the spring, and we, and we are confident that we will accommodate all of the students who are currently in housing in the spring. Most of this will be done through the measure of attrition. Those students that we expect not to return will create bed space on the campus. As it relates to our fall and moving forward plan, we, we have identified and are currently pursuing a fast-track option for a thousand new beds to come online to help us to mitigate our housing supply issue. And so we're working with VP Doug Allen is working with the, with TBR and others to help us navigate that space in a much quicker span. We're looking at some, we explore some other opportunities in the committee meeting, and we'll continue to really dig into how we can bring more beds online as, as well as, you know, looking at how we replace some of the beds that we currently have. That's certainly a need to, to upgrade and update some of the facilities that we have. So when we began this, this semester and we had to have five hotels, it certainly created a level of anxiety for some students, some who just simply weren't expecting that. And we, we did that as a stopgap measurement, not ever intending that this would be a permanent solution, but just a stopgap measurement to help us get through this space while we, while we look at how we can bring more beds online and how we can adequately take care of our students. I want to reiterate that for the spring semester, there's no students that have housing now that we don't anticipate housing for the spring. We do, we do know there'll be some students that graduate, some students who will transfer, some students who will not return, but those students who need housing, who are currently in housing, all will be accommodated. So again, we're looking, we're looking forward to digging in, we're looking forward to some innovative ways to provide housing in a quick space and make sure that our students who want to be on campus, that we can accommodate them. We've got some, we've got a proposal right now that's going before the State Building Commission for the Jefferson Flats. We anticipate if that is passed in December, that we'll bring the Jefferson Flats online for January. And I, we also are anticipating some other opportunities as we're in negotiations with some property adjacent to our apartments that, that may create some opportunities. So that concludes my report, and again, we're, we're digging in on the housing, and we're going to continue to create as many beds on campus and around the campus as we can to provide for a safe learning environment for our students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the President's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Trustees. This is the President's Report. It's a quick executive summary. We have record enrollment for first-year students at three thousand five hundred and sixty-seven. We're headed for another historic high this year in research funding. We, we reached an all-time high of seventy million two years ago. Last year, we had sixty-seven million, and this year, we are on target to top that seventy billion we reached two years ago. We see some housing challenges and we revised the housing plan, just heard about. We're going to establish an office of customer relations, and we're going to go over the financial statement audit and the control review. And the agenda follows that, go over enrollment and retention and housing, customer relations, audit and review, facilities and grants and research. Enrollment, our growth strategy does include... Enrollment, our growth strategy does include attracting top quality, high-performing students that come from various locations, two hundred and fifty-mile radius across, than others across the state and across the nation. This year, this, the high GPA average at three point three seven from all the students are thirty-five, sixty-seven, and that's a high GPA, that's our GPA for the average of those students. We have a large freshman class, the largest one in the history of TSU students, and the largest among HBCUs for this fall. So I just want to give you the enrollment data. I went back five years. So in twenty eighteen, we were seven, seven, twenty-four. Then twenty nineteen, we got up to eight thousand eighty-one. We dropped down during the pandemic, the first year of seven, six, fifteen. Then twenty twenty-one, eight, eight thousand seventy-seven. Then this year, nine thousand two hundred and eighteen, that is the highest that the university's ever experienced. Assembly for the first-year class, we went through for five years, twelve, twenty-five for twenty eighteen, you can see twelve, sixty-eight, then seventeen oh three, twenty-twenty, and sixteen thirty-seven last year, and this year, thirty-five, sixty-seven. Now, what caused the growth? We had a strategic, we had a strategic marketing plan, especially to in-state students and students who live within a two hundred and fifty-mile radius. We increased our digital recruiting and to both students and parents. We're meeting students where they are, and we know that all our students live on a computer, live in the digital world. So we really, we dug in and went more deeply into the digital world to reach more students. We had more virtual campus tours, more virtual events. And we have an intent to enroll form, which students assign, and we can better gauge who's going to come here once they sign the form. We had a higher yield among students who were accepted to TSU. In the past, we had twenty-nine to thirty percent have been accepted. This year, we have forty-one percent of those students who have been accepted who actually applied. Then we fixed an internal application process, which allowed for faster application processing. At one point, it was, it was close to manual, not quite manual, where we had to put a transcript with the application. But once that process was fixed, we got a new program that allowed for faster processing. We could, we could process applications faster, review it, and miss students faster. I think the two new student residence halls became an attractive feature. Then we had an increased focus on non-traditional students and students who have stopped out for whatever reason. Our recent credit ban continued to be a sell, a drawing point for us, and I think it's later on, we'll make that announcement again. And then just, we are experiencing HBCU renaisances across the country. Students are coming back home to HBCUs. So what does that mean? HBCUs have received a lot of exposure at local, state, and national levels, and then TSU is receiving a lot of positive exposure, and it's becoming a destination of choice for both students and, and parents sending students to school. And so students are just returning to HBCUs. That's causing a spike in enrollment for many of the HBCUs. And, and as President, I'm a fierce advocate for HBCUs. So I'm looking at the first-year comparison for other universities. If you look at FAMU, these had double-digit growth. These are peer institutions, had fifty-five percent. Jackson State had a hundred and seventeen percent. North Carolina Central had sixty-one percent increase from last year. Texas Southern had a hundred and eight percent increase, and then TSU had a hundred and seventeen percent, just as Jackson State did. Then look at the LGIs. This data came from, from the LGIs, came from our office that was prepared by THAC. So MTSU stayed pretty much the same, but APSU, that both of them stayed pretty much the same. ETSU, eleven percent growth. Tennessee Tech had twenty-three percent growth. University of Memphis dipped a little. Then TSU had a hundred and seventeen percent growth. So comparing to the other LGIs, you can see that, that three of them had, three of the LGIs had double-digit growth. So some of the retention activities, we expanded the retention team, and then we have retention coordinators for each academic college, and we've put this in place now. We want to make sure that, since we have so many students, new students especially, we want to make sure they return. So we put in some retention methodologies to, to make sure they return next semester. We've increased the student success activities and the student development programs and activities for first-year students, and just making sure that tutoring opportunities for students who need assistance in certain areas to make sure that they have those tutoring opportunities available. So let's go back to housing for a moment. We just heard the housing report, so I won't spend a lot of time talking about it. I will say, it's a supply-demand issue. The supply is just, is just not as great as the demand. The demand just greatly exceeds the supply. We have seven residence halls and three thousand two hundred and eighty beds. We can throw in a House of God, and it'll give us another, brings up to thirty-eight ten. We have nearly five hundred, I mean, five thousand applicants. So we placed nine hundred and seven off-campus in overflow, but I will stress that all students who paid deposits by the deadline were placed in housing, and some who paid after the deadline were on the wait list, still were placed in housing. And I do want to say that every student, I think I heard Dean Stevenson say, but every student who was in housing for this semester will be in housing for next semester. We are not, even though we know that we have a problem with the slight supply and demand, we've kind of make sure that all the students get placed, and we won't have to worry about that for next semester. So when we go to how we're going to communicate more with students and, and get the message out better, we want to have frequent, more frequent communications, early communications to students that pertain to their experiences. And the message to students, we want to be much more simplified and resolve any issues in an effective and timely manner. I think some of the problems that we encountered were because there were no return phone calls. There were no, but there were not enough return phone calls, there were not enough emails being returned. As a result, students were trying to get assistance wherever they could. So they called whomever they could call. They would call legislators, they would call down to the state offices because they needed to have information given to them. So we enhance the communication so we can ensure timely external, external communications from every division that, that impacts students. Then we retain the services of a, of a public relations firm to assist with our efforts, the Signathal Firm, which is FAM partners. We retain them to assist us. Now, what caused the higher housing challenge again? We had a higher percentage of first-year students who were accepted to TSU, actually enrolled in TSU. So we did, I mentioned earlier, we did announce that the past five years, the percentage has averaged from fifty, thirty percent roughly for students who were accepted to TSU, who actually came here. Because once they get accepted to TSU, they also get accepted to FISC or Memphis or MTSU and other schools. So that rate went up this year to forty-one percent. Then there's just increasingly a high cost of living in the Nashville area, which makes students want to return to campus to live. And also coupled with that, there's a lack of affordable housing in the area. And again, we cannot ignore that we're going through an HBCU renaissance, which is a good thing. And for the spring and fall, we're going to continue with the two hotels for spring twenty twenty-three. Instead of five that we have now, we'll have two for next semester, and then continue with the House of God living quarters. Then some spaces will through attrition, as some people will graduate, and then unfortunately some will not return. Then there are some preferred suggested locations that we're putting together, that list for students who cannot get, cannot live on campus, though about eighty-two percent of our students who do live on campus who apply. We are establishing an Office of Customer Relations just to provide information and to answer questions, to ensure that questions are answered, and increased concerns, they're being addressed in a timely manner. We're asking each division to develop your customer relation goals, because our customer is our students. We're going to have our customer relations goals established, and we're going to assess the various units periodically to ensure that the goals are being met. And then we ask them to work proactively to identify potential concerns and what are the long-term solutions to those, those concerns. And then finally, we will establish a student customer service advisory committee to assist the Office of Customer Relations. We move to the financial statement audit. The TSU received an unmodified or a clean opinion for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The audit contained three findings for this period from July twentieth to June twenty-one. The findings have been corrected. TSU has a new management team in Division Finance. We have five CPAs, including our new vice president. I'm not sure if you see a new, but I've been here a year, a little over a year, new vice president, and a controller both with CPAs. We implemented a policy, just a bank reconciliation policy, because as you know, it's about the reconciliations that were not done. Keep going. So I want to make sure that we, it's clear, it's important to point out from the audit that, that became the headline on Channel Seventeen. There were no funds missing. There was no, there were no funds misused or mismanaged. I'm not sure what the headline said, but if you're listening in on the report, the meeting on Tuesday, I think they asked the auditors more than once, any funds missing? Said, no. How do you know? He said, we did an exhaustive review. We did a very detailed search to make sure, and that's part of audit procedures. And so it is, it's inflammatory to when TV stations or media acts irresponsibly like that, but we, I'm not here to please Fox, I'm here to serve the students at TSU. So we failed to reconcile accounts. That's what happened, which is required to do. You have to reconcile accounts, and we did not do that. So this led to a finding, and it's contrary again to what the media reports, is based on not reconciling accounts. But we have corrected that, and we've moved on. So the Senate Ad-Hoc Committee and the Controller's Review, the Controller is still performing a review of TSU's enrollment policies and practices to ensure efficient resources to support growth. So they looked at, when the, when the, when the review team came, we made sure we gave them every file on every first-year student. Thirty-five hundred and sixty-seven files were lined up in this room in paper forms so they could have ease of operation. And so they did consult the files and peruse the files, and each one had all the information in it that was required. So I think we put to bed that the rumor that everybody got in who applied, whether or not they met the criteria. We put that to bed because we showed that the students had good GPAs, and every single aspect of, of a requirement was met per student. So the, the hearing was held on November fifteenth, which was Tuesday of this week, and they had some concerns in the areas of enrollment and retention, housing, the financial audit, and facilities. I don't think they got to facilities, but those in the letter that they would be addressed. But those were the areas that we discussed with them and answered their questions about. We have some follow-up we're going to submit to them. Let's go facilities and maintenance. We're working on agreement with an outside consultant who's going to help us in the maintenance of TSU facilities. We're still working on that. We have a firm that's been identified, and so they've been speaking with us regularly. But there are various repairs and upgrades on campus that have already been completed, not related to this maintenance of the, of the funding that we received from the government, from the last year. We have some painting and grounds and other work and maintenance needs that still needs to be done. So for the infrastructure funding that we received in budget, two thousand and twenty-two budget, the state appropriated two hundred and fifty million dollars for infrastructure upgrades at TSU. We continue to express our gratitude to Governor Bill Lee and to the legislature for making TSU a priority in the budget, and we are pleased that, that TSU did receive the funding. So we're, we're prepared to list the buildings now to start repairs, the Davis Humphreys, Boswell, and the Love Buildings were submitted initially, that, that list has expanded. So, but deferred maintenance will be significantly reduced once we start working on the buildings. Returning out to grants and research, I mentioned earlier that we were on target to top out our largest number we had ever had, which is seventy million dollars, seventy point seven. So right now, in the month of November, we have fifty-five million dollars. So getting fifteen million more for the next six or seven months shouldn't be as difficult, but that's our plan to top the seventy million. But I can tell you, there's been a hundred awards to date that we have received that total is fifty-five million. And TSU's in the top, top HBCU in receiving USDA funds from NIFSA. I mean, we're the number-one HBCU that, from USDA through NIFSA that receives these funds. And we continue to be in the top five every year in receiving research funds from the federal government. Corporate giving is still up. I listed the Donalds that had a million dollars or more. They've given us Apple, FedEx, and the Robert Covington Foundation, Bank of America, Lowe's, and HCA, and then we have two, three others in the works for a million dollars for this year. So in summary, I'm going to say it again, record enrollment for the first-year students. The highest GPA was three, three, seven. We're headed for another historic year. We have a housing challenge, we, we have a, a plan to make sure that the students are taken care of. We just want to make sure the students understand that we're here because of the students and that we care. We care about the students and care about their well-being, and so that's why we're making sure we go through all of this, is to make sure the students, you know, get a quality education in an environment that will allow them to study and live and learn. We're establishing an Office of Customer Relations, and then I went over the financial statement audit and controller review. That's the summary. And the last chart is just good news, the recent credit bands nominated for two Grammys. I'm going to stop so we can applaud on that. These include the best roots gospel album, The Urban Hymnal, then collaboration with J. I. B.'s Best Spoken Word poetry album, The Poet Who Sat By The Door. So we're excited about that. Our recent credit band was excited about all of our student organizations. I just thought that was really special, that the news was announced that, that they had gotten a nomination for two Grammys. Madam President, that's the President's report. Thank you.
Thank you, President Glover. Thank you.
Chair Cole.
Yes, sir.
I have one question that I have not heard asked, and it's bothering me right now.
Yes, sir.
We have seven resident halls here on campus. Is that right?
Yes.
Have we ever had more than that? Does anybody know?
I don't think so.
And we're going to add two more. Is that correct?
That is the plan to seek approval from the State Building Commission to add two more. It's, it's in the budget already, but it's for further out, and not, we're asking to, let us bring it on earlier to help meet the housing demand.
Well, I'm thinking about HBCU renaissance. Who knows? There may be other things, other reasons that we might need more than two. And I wanted to bring that to this board's attention. You don't ever know what's getting ready to happen or what has already happened that might cause us to need more than two additional residence halls.
Thank you, is well taken.
Thank you, Trustee Lewis. Thank you, President Glover, for that report. They're very positive reporters. I think we, and we talked about it, and we are taking steps to get all this positive information out in the community so that it can be massaged just as the negative information that is going to...
And to our students.
Yeah, and to our students, yes, to our students, and to make sure our students understand that we do care and we do hear you, so you can come and talk to us. At this point in time, the next item on the agenda is the board's chair. I just simply want to thank each and every one of the trustees that, that are here today for the extensive amount of time that you spend on these days and the tremendous input that you give. I thank your cabinet members for being here to provide us with the information. We appreciate the work you do to get us prepared for when we come in, coming. A tremendous amount of work goes into it. And as I said before, for those that are listening electronically, the majority of the work are done in the committee meetings, and just as you may join us here, you may join us there. So we do sincerely appreciate you. At this point in time, if there's no additional business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
This second?
Second motion.
Okay, Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Pinnick.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Do what happened?
He's calling the roll. He's got...
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I called.
Did he ethics hit?
Okay.
Trustee McKenzie.
Oh, here.
Okay, so, okay, so the motion is approved, the meeting is adjourned. Okay. Okay.
I will call you.